I'm going to call to order this joint meeting of the Richfield City Council, HRA, and Planning Commission. It's July 20th at 6:00 PM. And we're here for a discussion of the revised proposal for properties at northeast corner of 60th Street and Lyndale Avenue. And so I'm going to turn it over to Executive Director Stark.
Thank you Chair Supple and Commissioners and Council members. This shouldn't be a new topic to you. This, I believe, is the probably the third or maybe even more than that time we've discussed this in the past 10 months. This first came to you last September. I'm going to pass this along to Melissa Pellman, the Assistant Community Development Director, and to introduce the developers.
John, thank you, everyone. Like John mentioned, the first time that you heard about this proposal was last September. There was a preliminary proposal, Brian Bachman of Enclave Development, as well as some of his partners were here to speak with you. In general, if you'll recall, it was a fairly positive workshop. Everyone had a lot of good things to say, but there were a few issues that you did identify that you asked the developer to look into more. Specifically, those issues were the lack of actual affordable units within the project itself, the fact that the parking faced and fronted right on 65th Street, that podium parking, that first level was right there up on the street. And then also, we talked about potential parking spillover into the neighborhood and the loss of several small businesses in the existing commercial center. So that's what Brian and his team have been working on for the past several months, and they are here tonight to give you an update on that. You should have received revised plans as part of your packet. Hopefully, you had time to review some of those. And I'm going to welcome Brian Bachman and turn it over to him. Brian, are you there? I see you, but I can't hear you. Or I see that you're here. I'm just going to check my phone, which I don't have.
He's having trouble with audio before, so I don't know. Maybe he can write in chat.
Let's see. Brian, I know there's some other folks from your team here.
Hello, this is Neil Reardon from ESG. Yes, myself, Chris Willett, and Ryan Sampson are available from ESG. I know Brian is on the call. He's probably just working on a couple of technical difficulties at the moment.
Yeah, he just message in chat. Okay.
So to remind everybody, the Lakes at Lyndale area is where this project is located. We've got a big transportation project coming in in this area. This intersection here at 65th and Lyndale will become a roundabout. We're going to reconstruct 65th Street with bike lanes. That section of Lyndale Avenue is also going to be reconstructed. So this project will take advantage of and be cognizant of those other infrastructure changes and investments that the city is making in this area. Brian, are you with us now? Not yet. And then also, as a reminder, Lakes at Lyndale, this vision is something that started for the city back in the late 90s. So this has been something that has been on our project list for more than 20 years. The Lyndale Plaza to the north, that was the first project that really started the redevelopment north of our immediate downtown. And that was expected to be a catalyst for the other redevelopments that now you're seeing finally come online. This is one of the last pieces in that in that area.
Melissa, this is Christopher Willett with ESG Architects. While Brian's trying to dial in, thanks for the introduction. If we if you can't connect in audio in just a minute here, I think Neil and I can adequately just talk through the overall description of the current plans. What I would ask is maybe just a favor of, in terms of sharing the plans on the screen with this new digital world we find ourselves in, does somebody on the city side of things put that up on the screen? Or would you like ESG to do that?
I can share that, just to...
Can you hear me now?
We can, Brian.
Yay. I love technology. Sorry about that. Thanks for the introduction and the tap dance, trying to give me time to call in. I appreciate it. We really should have had your daughter come on and kill some time. That would have been way better use. So yeah, this isn't, we've gotten a lot of feedback from city staff, from some local folks in town, and from some of the elected officials that we've been able to talk to about this project and some of the things that we wanted to kind of focus on. So we were able to make some changes to try to take some of those requests and questions into into action by kind of changing up the plan and changing up how we get it. So one of the first ones you mentioned was doing a better job of activating 65th and Lyndale. Our old plan had basically the parking structure was what was fronting 65th. So you basically just saw a big concrete wall or brick wall. We've changed that to now have some walk-up units, which are a little more of that kind of brownstone look, just does a better job of activating some of 65th with some people going in and out. And that wraps all the way around onto Lyndale as well. So that basically, the entire frontage of both sides of the building are now either walk-up units or retail shop spaces. We also created a bit of a plaza area in the front so that it can have areas for the shops to have either outdoor seating or outdoor racks or the other types of things, so that we can kind of have a little more action happening there on on Lyndale. And that is covered with the building above it to try to help with the winds and everything else. And then we also created a lobby opening out onto Lyndale as another one of the storefronts, so that we have access, walk-up access at the street level on both the front and the rear of the building. She had also mentioned about limiting some of the neighborhood spillover. To do that, we removed one of our access points, so we now just have one point of access in the rear of the building. And then we made sure that we had adequate parking on the site to take care of all of our residents and any potential retailers. We have one per thousand, three per thousand for our commercial space, and 1.49 parking spaces per unit for the apartments. She mentioned retaining as much of the retail presence on Lyndale as we can. We still have 8,000 square feet. We have walk-up frontside entrances for these units, and there will also be rear-facing entrances for the parking area, so that people can either walk to the property or drive to the property. And as a quick update, we'd also been asked to, you know, try to make the ease of transition for the current tenants, be as smooth and painless as possible for them. I met with all of the remaining tenants last Tuesday when I was in town to discuss just what our current plans are, what timing is. They're sending, everyone's sending me their email address, so that we can kind of start a group, a group email that goes back and forth, that we're, we can keep them better informed on timing and development and everything else, so that everyone's kind of up to date. The things that we took away from that meeting was the COVID delays that have kind of come because of the inability for us to kind of move this forward for a few months during when COVID was kind of starting. We'll probably add some days in the back end of this, where we were at first thinking we would probably try to get started in February. That's probably not going to be realistic anymore with the all the fun that's happening. We're probably looking more into the future April timeframe, which seemed to work really well for a lot of the relocation possibilities for the folks that were still there. As another update, they're, I've been talking with the building owner, pre-COVID, he was 10% vacant. He is currently 42% vacant with nine tenants that are 60 days in arrears on rent, and two which, and two more that have already given notice. So unfortunately, COVID has definitely affected some of the folks in this building. But with the folks that were still there, we had a study commissioned to come up with all of the available space for retail and for office in Richfield. We have told those folks that we will share that information with them. The information has, you know, building sizes, lease sizes, lease rates, lease terms, everything else. So our, the brokers that we work with quite a bit will all be available to these folks to be able to try to ease the transition for those that want to move within Richfield. And the city is also, in working with Melissa, has stated that they're still working on a relocation assistance program that will certainly help help them as they move forward. And we've also told all the tenants that they are certainly welcome in our new space, should the transition timing work for them. The hardest part for anybody that's in the building would be vacating their space and then for, you know, approximately a year and a half, and then trying to relocate back. And last thing, what she had mentioned was that, obviously, the affordable question was a big one. It was also kind of a struggle for us to try to make the financial, the financials work on the project the way we had it before. So we engaged ESG to come in and kind of relook at the property and try to give us some ways to try to make the project work a little better. We were able to add some units to the property. We were able to come up with some newer use, some new and different uses. But most of all, the extra units helped us get closer to being able to balance that gap. The good part of that is, is our new tip, if we were to do the cash payment for our affordable units, the actual contribution would be almost 1.6 million in revenue that has a present day value of 930,000. So that gives the HRA some useful gunpowder in how they can deal with some older projects, either use that to fund some upgrades or grants or different things. But the other thing that came along since then is the new Tennesan County low-income guidelines came out, and we were able to relook at what our rents were versus that. And what we found is a lot of, a lot of our current units are already in line with the 70 to 80% AMI values for the properties. And as we have it currently proposed, 57% of our units would qualify the 70 or 80% category. So the good part we found is that we can actually contribute almost a million dollars and still provide a lot of units. And beyond that, I can, we'll, Austin and I are both here, so we can certainly answer any questions that you may have.
So Melissa, did you have anything else you wanted to say before we took questions?
No, I don't have anything to add.
All right. So if you are on audio or video, you can wave your hand. Otherwise, you can click on the button for raising your hand over on the participant side. So I'm seeing Commissioner Lavin is going ahead, so go ahead.
Hi, and I appreciate your time and sharing this information with us tonight. Unfortunately, I wasn't at the last one. I look at this plan, and my biggest concern is the, is the exit and of the entry of the parking in from off, from that neighborhood. That's going to push a lot of traffic onto 64th and a half and Harriet, either going east or north. Has that always been the configuration, or has that just been a recent, recent change? And is there any thought to finding a way to dump the traffic out onto Lyndale directly or to 65th?
There is an entrance and exit directly onto Lyndale on the far end of the property. So you are able to go in on that end and get all the way over to the underground parking areas, and then obviously the surface parking ones, too.
But do you think that, do you think that that's what it'll be? I mean, that's, it seems to me that most residents would probably just, I mean, I see where you go through the commercial area spaces, right? And then enter and exit from the north? Okay.
I think what we've usually seen typically is people take whatever the shortest route is. And the good news for us is the shortest route is still going around the end of the building, because otherwise you have to go all the way through that neighborhood. And it'll typically, the only way that that would be quicker would be possibly the folks that are going out on the 65th.
Well, then, is there a way that we could just close that off and not make that an option?
No, because I think with fire code, we have to have at least two points of access.
Okay. Because I can probably, well, I can predict, and I'm not sure if you've gotten public feedback from this, but that'll be a real point of residential stress from the surrounding neighborhood.
Right. And that was a point that Melissa and John have stressed from day one. So that's literally, right now, there are two points of access to this, to the retail areas that obviously can go, come in and go out. We lowered that to one to try to help. And then made sure that we, most importantly, had adequate parking, because if we were, if we were low on parking, we would definitely have a lot of spillover into there.
Yep. No, I agree with, I think the parking ratio is, I don't have an issue with that. It's just, for me, it's the, just the access points, and I think that'll, the traffic amount that'll be added, not only from this project, but there's other projects in the area that are really putting, I think, some stress into this particular neighborhood. So I'm just looking to see if there was options to somehow further alleviate that. But I understand your points.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you, Chair Supple. I, my question is just to clarify. So the project would continue to request TIF and meet the inclusionary housing policy by making an in-lu payment that the statements about the 70 and 80% AMI don't change anything about how they're meeting the inclusionary housing policy compared to the initial proposal? Is that correct?
No, what it is, is that we have naturally occurring affordability units, basically, because of the way Richfield's rent structure works. So that's where those would be. We would do the 15% of our TIF being issued to the HRA to be our inclusionary housing meet, that would meet that standard. And then the naturally occurring units would just be units that would be extra.
To clarify, and perhaps Sue, you're, you're not muted. We can hear you. I don't know if you can hear us. To clarify, that, that would not, that would not be a NOAA unit any more than any of our existing market rate units are NOAA units. Market rate is 70 or 80% AMI is where it's affordable. So unless you're going to, in which it sounds like, since you're calling it NOAA, you would not be income restricting it, that it would just, that's what the rent would be at. And so I guess to me, that doesn't, I think it's, it's great, some of the other things you've addressed in terms of kind of the what is facing the streets. I think that's great. I think this is a great space for a mixed-use development like this. I guess I'm still just, I'm not impressed with the affordability levels, and I don't think that the, the in-lu payment, I don't think that is worth as much as the affordable, 20% affordable units would be. And so I guess I'm wondering, I personally would like to find more, and I know you, staff and the developers have been working on this already, I would rather find more resources and offer a deeper contribution from the city. And maybe that's not literal money. Maybe it's relaxing things to allow them to get more units on the site or something. But I, I guess I would rather us offer more and get some actual affordability, rather than offering the TIF money that we are and not really, and just getting some of the TIF money back.
Chair Supple, maybe between Melissa and I, we can address that. You know, I would say, you know, at the city council meeting last week, the city council approved a resolution for the, an application to the Met Council to seek funding. So, you know, that's an ongoing process to try to find additional funding. I don't, I can't tell you off the top of my head what the gap is between what, where this project is financially feasible and what it would take to add in those affordable units. But we have talked about the magnitude of the gap. And right now, that's something that exceeds our, you know, our financial ability to fill with other sources. So that is why we're looking outside for sources.
Right. And I'll just add as well, you know, that we're continuing to explore other options as well. Is there a way to provide a part of this affordable component, similar to what we've done at Lakeside at Lyndale? Can we prorate something? Can we get to a place where this, where we close this gap and this project is workable and a bank is going to agree to finance it by providing maybe 10% of the units instead of 20%? Can we get there? You know, Brian can tell you this better than I can, but right now, the numbers that I have seen, this project has a gap with the units, it has a gap without the units. So right now, we're, we're trying to find ways to make the project work, period, and then find money also for this gap to provide those actual units. We've also explored providing some accessible units. These conversations are ongoing. And again, Brian can tell you this from the developer's point of view. But my, my understanding is that everybody is still working toward this. The ultimate goal would be to provide units. But right now, we're, we're not getting to those numbers.
And, you know, I believe the underlying problem on this site is, it's not quite main and main, which would be 66th and Lyndale, but it's, it's almost main and main. And so it's just a much more expensive piece of real estate. When the appraisers go in to value it, when the property owner determines what he wants to, what's appropriate to sell it for, the real estate number is just much higher than it is on a lot of other parcels we've looked at in the past.
The other issue is that it is an amazingly tight site, which makes the costs go kind of through the roof as well, because we're at pretty much a zero lot line site and have to build it during, in a busy area. So that's kind of an issue. But to address what Melissa had said, is we are certainly open to looking at other options, trying to make this thing work when it comes to the affordability. We, we want to be a good neighbor, and we want to try to do everything that we can to do that. But the reality is, as John had said, too, is that we have to be able to make it work economically enough to be able to have investors that are comfortable and banks that are comfortable. And both of those things are more difficult now in a current COVID and post-COVID world than they were even before. So we're trying to be, you know, mindful of that and also mindful of what we can try to do to help out on the affordability side.
Brian, I'm wondering if you could also address Ben's comment regarding like a density bonus. Would you see that as something that would work on this site to help you get there? What are the, are there, is that a possibility here?
It would, on a lot of sites, that would be great. In, in like some of the communities that we're working in, like Bloomington has that same concept, that if you do more affordability units, you can have more of a density. Our problem with this site is, is just the parking ratios. You know, when we first came in, we wanted to do this as a, as a taller building and, you know, John and Melissa met with us and said that, you know, that was really not going to be popular with the neighbors. And so we took a, we took a floor off of it. And then it also got our parking ratios to be where everybody was more comfortable. So I don't, I don't know that we can get the site a whole lot more dense and still maintain reasonable parking ratios.
All right. Does anyone else have comments or questions? Did you want to finish, Ms.?
Just add one more thing. I want to clarify that those aren't necessarily the city's parking requirements. They're Enclave's parking requirements and what they are comfortable with. Those are within the range that's acceptable to the city. But it's, it's not our parking requirements that are making it difficult for this to work.
Yeah, no, my apologies. Yeah, it's, that's just our own internal stuff. We, the biggest thing we find when we are an underparked project is that we tend to have massive turnover, because people will certainly move to this space because they like Richfield's downtown, they like the amenities we're going to have, they like the walkability that it'll have. But if they have to park two blocks away every night at 6:30, they move out in a year. And it just kind of becomes a recurring problem. So we're always pretty sensitive to make sure that we're adequately parked. And the other thing is, is if we, if we, if we always know that if we underpark it, we will really end up in, you know, involving 64 and a half street is going to end up becoming our overflow, our overflow parking. And we want to try to avoid that.
Commissioner Hefron, Larry?
Thank you. So I've got a few comments. The first is just a general comment. I, by and large, think that this is a good project. I hope it moves forward, and I hope it's able to work through these issues, because I think there are real costs here, but it is an improvement to our downtown, an improvement to that site. But it's not so great that it obviously doesn't have flaws. So the first thing I want to say is sort of a design issue. I am concerned about how really the front feels like at 64th and a half street in that corner. It feels like a suburban building with the parking lot in front, and it's just flipped around. I'm really concerned that the back of the building will be facing Lyndale, and that it will not have meaningful customer activity. If there's a restaurant and it's good weather, there might be patio activity. But as long as we're doing this dual frontage thing, where most customers are coming from the back, and we're not really directing people to the street side entrance, that concerns me. I provided the developer and city staff a list of many projects where we've attempted this, where we do opposite side entrances, and it's been a consistent failure every single time. The tenants lock the entrances, even when they explicitly promised to do so as a condition of the approval, they lock their entrances. City staff are having to babysit them. I want to see the real main customer entrances on Lyndale. I'm hopeful that the new on-street parking on Lyndale will help support that, but that is a concern of mine, both because I want an active Lyndale Avenue, I want it to be a pedestrian-friendly environment, and because, you know, people having a good time at the restaurant, leaving, I don't necessarily want to center all that activity on the back next to the single-family home neighbors. I would rather that those long Minnesota goodbyes take place on Lyndale Avenue. The second comment, and I, you know, I think I've, if the developer chooses to respond to this concern, that's fine, but I think it's mostly, you don't, you don't need to. I've just said my piece on that. The second issue is not really a planning commission issue, but something that I hope the HRA considers, which I am concerned about the amount of parking being provided in light of the subsidies that they would be receiving. They're, they're providing, as Melissa noted, quite a bit more than the city requires, although it is an allowed range, about 57 more spaces than they're actually required to provide for residential parking. I don't have a strong opinion about the commercial parking. I guess I trust their instincts on that. But 57 spaces is a lot of spaces, based on what other developers have told us, in terms of sort of back-of-napkin costs. That's $500,000 to a million and a half dollars for empty parking spaces. And when we're hearing that the financing gap is so large that we need to lose affordable commercial and we need to not be able to build any affordable units in the building, it really troubles me to see that much money spent on added parking. And just, you know, to remind us that in general, Richfield tenants do not have that many cars. Maybe this building would be an exception, but actual typical average renter rental, renter parking or renter vehicle ownership is about 1.13 vehicles per household. So 1.5 is significantly more. If they were paying for it all, it wouldn't concern me. But in light of them not being able to meet other goals in terms of providing affordable commercial space and affordable housing, I would rather see our city dollars subsidizing that than subsidizing more parking spaces. And so it's just a specific suggestion. I would love if that northeastern surface parking lot became a green space for the residents to use and it became proof of parking, um, that could be utilized if there is in fact actually a problem with overflow into the neighborhood. But if it doesn't save some money on asphalt and it becomes an attractive green space for those residents. So, thank you.
Um, why don't, um, Chris Willett from ESG is on the call. Chris, do you want to kind of address the, um, the commercial space, the, the front and rear entrances? He's our architect. Um, uh, I do think that the front side, uh, street side parking will make a big difference. But Chris, can you, um, can you kind of go on, uh, and fill everybody in on kind of the pluses and minuses of the, um, front and rear, uh, commercial space?
Yeah, certainly. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Um, I, I'm not in any disagreement with the comments made. Uh, of course, this is, this has been an urban design problem since, since the suburb was invented, I think. Uh, in that you're trying to balance either tucking parking out a way, out of the way. So it's not the primary visual, you know, and sea of pavement that we see. Uh, you achieve that by tucking away in the back of the project. Uh, the other approach, of course, is what a lot of big box sites do when you place it in the front and, um, and we all know the effects of that. And when we're in such a primary corner in the city, um, good urban design instinct tells us to try and push the building uh, forward and, uh, and build up that pedestrian impact as much as we can. That said, the, the challenges are, are real, of course, of trying to direct people around the front of things. We can't really speak towards who the future retail is in this case, or, or the control and management style of the city that's necessary to, you know, enforce essentially the, uh, the tenants to keep their doors open, so to speak. But I think we, we are open to looking at other ways of, um, of trying to get people around to the front of the building so that those, uh, those primary pedestrian accesses are used. It, it is, it's, it's a challenge. There's no doubt. Like I said, it's a, it is an urban design challenge we run into all the time. Uh, in, in jurisdictions all over. So as Brian mentioned, opportunities, what improves the conditions are when there's opportunities for street parking. Um, if that's a viable option in this site, that certainly helps. Uh, I live up in Maple Grove and our main street development's a really good example of that, where the primary parking setup, just like this, tucked behind, uh, commercial, uh, real estate areas. And then the, uh, there's on-street parking basically that, uh, all the grab and go kind of, uh, outfits use, uh, to channel pedestrians and people into their front doors. Uh, I think the other, uh, notable thing that we really tried to do here was by introducing this, uh, commercial terrace area that's labeled on the site plan and you see in these renderings, uh, that, that it's almost like a tuck under space that adds a protective, very, uh, very distinct area where people can gather to, especially if this ends up being, um, a small fast food or grab and go outfits. So it, yeah, I, again, there's, uh, no doubt it is a, it is a challenge to overcome. And I think going back to looking at other ways of, there, there are some opportunities to create walk-through lanes through the commercial site. But that does eat away at real estate and does sometimes create these spaces that, uh, potentially are unsafe or tend not to be super well lit sometimes. Uh, we're trying to avoid that too. So the result is what we've shown here was intentional, um, and ideally trying to get people to walk around, uh, the side of the building. And there's other ways we can achieve that too by, uh, emphasizing, uh, you know, maybe we carve out a little bit of that, uh, current commercial space, uh, adjacent to where you see the vehicle in the rendering on the left side of the screen and, and make a more prominent outdoor area that gets people wrapped around to the front of the building.
Assistant Director Palman, can you clarify, you've mentioned that, you know, there's, we're going to be redoing parts of Lyndale and 65th. Is there on-street parking right in front of this building?
I did talk to, um, Jack Bros about that today and as of now, there is not. The on-street parking for Lyndale would be north of here, about a block. He did say that we could continue to explore it. Um, if people are interested in having on-street parking here, it's something to talk about, but in the current plan, he said there is not.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? Mia Regan Gonzalez, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I've just been writing some notes. So I've had multiple conversations with staff about, um, the transition and support for our small businesses and the importance, um, that small business has in keeping Richfield vibrant. And that is definitely, I would say, one of my top priorities for sure. And we have had conversations around potential amounts that the small businesses could apply for, the relocation assistance, um, and just providing that technical assistance and support to them. So, um, I just want to say thanks to the staff for, for that, um, support because it's extremely important and, um, to the developer for saying that they were going to share their study and, and options to those businesses as well that they conducted. Um, because I do think if we can relocate the businesses that are still here in our, in our community, that would be, that would be a huge, huge, huge win, in my opinion. Um, and then I all, I wanted to just repeat that I share the same concerns that Commissioner Lavin and Heford O'Leary have around, um, kind of the positioning of things and the impact that that will have on the single family homes in the neighborhood. So the, the entrance that goes right in and out of the neighborhood as, um, Commissioner Lavin shared. And then also the amenities that Hey, um, Commissioner Heford O'Leary talked, talked about where the pool, the green space is going to be projecting out and facing, um, the neighborhood. So I don't know if, if either of those two options can be revisited or not. And then, um, I did appreciate, um, Commissioner Heford O'Leary's comments about activating the streets and really looking at those entrances. And I understand, um, why there's problems with, with the site that we have. But again, whatever we can do to, to activate that Lyndale side, um, is, is much better. This is such an important corner in our community. And then lastly, um, I just want to reiterate the need and interest for continued affordability in the development it as poss, if possible. And I know, um, that there's a lot of moving pieces and there's a lot of applications that are competitive. Um, but obviously the site is going to take some creativity regardless, and I would really like to see affordable housing be a part of that if possible.
Thank you. Commissioner Sandel?
Thank you, Chair. Um, wanted to know whether or not, and I don't recall the plans for Lyndale north of 66th, all the way up to the crosstown, are there going to be any more roundabouts? Um, I drove around the neighborhood to kind of get a feel for what the neighbors were talking about in their letters and found it quite difficult to get across the street. And I don't know how the residents are doing it. Um, but there was quite a bit of traffic at, you know, rush hour. And I'm wondering what's going to be done to slow traffic. Um, clearly the south of Lyndale, on Lyndale, those roundabouts do slow the traffic down and they provide access for people to get across. I'm wondering what the, what, what the plan is on the north, north end of Lyndale.
Commissioner Sandel, there is a plan for a roundabout at 65th and Lyndale. Um, and then there are plans also to narrow that road as you're going north on Lyndale to include bike lanes, some on-street parking, again, where they've been able to fit it. And according to Jack, they can still look at additional spaces for on-street parking in that corridor. Um, the, the point of difficulty, I think, for pedestrians is that curve, um, at 64th, where it intersects with that Lakeside Lyndale development. Um, I don't know that there's a great solution to that right now. Although, uh, hopefully as traffic, um, is slowed down in that area and the lanes are narrowed, hopefully that will, uh, make that crossing safer as well. Uh, Commissioner Heford O'Leary is also our liaison to the Transportation Commission. So he may have, um, some additional information to add.
Um, yeah, I would just add there, there is no, and just to be clear on Lyndale, it's, it's mostly a restripe of the existing roadway. It won't be reconstructed except at the roundabout itself. So that limits what can be done unfortunately. So there's no roundabout proposed for 64th. I'm hopeful just because the through lanes will get so much farther from the curb that visibility will be improved, but you're still going to have some trouble getting out there. And I don't think that will change significantly with the restripe. Um, I did just want to send one, one possible issue, just to be clear, that the street parking does not cover this whole frontage, but it is quite close to the building. I did send something to Melissa just now, but it, it will partially cover the building, at least as of the plans that Public Works put out about a month ago. Um, I'm hopeful it can be extended further since there was enthusiasm about that from the developer.
Um, there was a message in the chat that we just voted to reduce the speed limit along Lyndale down to 30. So that should help somewhat. Um, are there other questions that people wanted? To ask? Or come, all right, Commissioner Lavin?
Yeah, just, um, and again, I apologize if this is already known, but do we have, is there plans or even a, a tenant, uh, that might be, uh, uh, you know, appropriate for that commercial space? And we think in a restaurant or retail, um, is one Ben, that's been identified to go in there at this point?
No, not yet. Um, it's a little early for us to do that. Um, we would love to have a restaurant in the space. That would be ideal for us to pick up some sort of a restaurant. Uh, I mean, in an ideal world, we would have a restaurant, a coffee shop and a couple of small retailers. Um, but it's, um, it's tough to predict. Sometimes you, uh, uh, you have ideas of what you think it's going to be and then, uh, the market tells you it's something different.
Thank you.
No problem.
Are there any other comments or questions? Commissioner Sandel?
Um, was, is the commercial access for the people visiting the commercial site, are people going to be coming in? What is in a sense the back door? Or are you also looking to have front doors or one or the other or both?
Um, it would be both. So that we would have access for people who are walk, who are doing walking along, walking along the street. And then there would also be, uh, an entrance on the backside where the parking, the parking field would be.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Other questions? Um, Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you, Chair Supple. Um, to clarify to the developer, it could be one commercial tenant or multiple, just depending on who is interested.
Exactly.
Okay. And then I guess I would just-
I don't foresee an 8,000 square foot tenant, but you never know.
Okay. Um, I would echo, um, Commissioner Heford O'Leary's concerns about having a front and back door. I'm picturing specifically the businesses in, um, Kenwood. I don't know if that's one that you mentioned of, um, that I, I never see anything happening on the front doors there. Um, and so I, I don't know what the solution to that is, but I share that concern. And then just to clarify, um, I know, I know it's an ongoing question, um, and that others had said they're interested if it is possible. I, I believe I stated this in September and will share again now that I, if affordability is not possible, I don't know that I would want this project. And so I think, um, for me, that is a central question to whether or not this is worth moving any farther along. And I, I know that's something that we figure out as we go, as we hear about some of the grant applications. Um, but just wanted to clarify, for me, that is not an if that is possible. I think that that is the entire reason why we have the inclusionary housing policy. And the fact that they may be able to afford it with the in lieu payment, but not with the actual units just points to me what I said two years ago before I was on the council, that our in lieu payment seems too low.
Are there other comments or questions? Um, if, oh, Commissioner Reese Daniels, go ahead. You're still muted.
How about now? All right, here we go. I just want to say that I also echo the comments about affordability and, um, would not approve this if we can't get some sort of affordability in there and, and would not want to move forward with just the in lieu payment. So I think it's, it's such a vital part, um, of any development that we build or, um, attach money to.
Uh, Chair Supple, can I ask a quick question of, I'm not sure who, um, whether-
Sure, go ahead.
For John. Um, on other, the other projects that are either in planning or construction, or how are those affordability, all of the affordability dealt with with those? Did those provide units? Did those do a mix? Did those do the cash? How did those work?
Um, all of the above. Uh, there are some provided a, that provided the cash. Uh, there are some that provided half and half, uh, half cash and half units and some that are providing only units. So it really is a mix.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I also am concerned about making sure that the businesses that are currently there get some sort of a relocation that's happening because I don't want to lose the small businesses we have in our area. And I want to make sure that, that we get some support for them if we do go forward with this project. It would be fabulous if we could find some way to get some affordability included in this project as well. I do think that that's a priority if possible. Um, but I do think we need to look at the overall tax base as well and make sure that if, if we are having businesses being pushed out, that they have somewhere to go in Richfield and that they stay in Richfield and we do something to support small businesses. Are there other people that have questions or comments? Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Elliott, you haven't spoken yet.
Yeah, I've been, there we go. I've had numerous conversations with staff, uh, citizens, council members, voters. And, and now we, we almost are drawing the line in the sand, no affordability, no deal. I want one of the people that, that talks that way to suggest what's going to happen and when it's going to happen the next three to five years. Um, he, everybody acknowledges the necessity of affordability, but, but you can't put blinders on and live in a world where if it's not there, we're not going to okay a project. I think it's short sighted and I think you're, 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 you're vesting your concern in one aspect of the citizenry in Richfield at the same time ignoring a lot of others. And I think it's an inappropriate way to deal with a situation like this. When they come to you, work with you for a year, try to make as many adjustments as possible and we keep adding roadblocks to them. I think it's inappropriate and I don't think it's fair to the developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. Mr. Lavin?
Um, I'd like to echo some of that sentiment. Um, I, I appreciate the project of the developers wanting to revitalize this, um, this section of our city bringing capital. Um, of course, I would like to add affordable, uh, components if it's feasible. Um, but I certainly wouldn't be on, in a position that would stop something of, of this magnitude and I think this benefit to the city, uh, because we don't get that, especially since we have, uh, payment and lieu as part of our, our process. And to that, to that regard, I, you know, I appreciate the developers coming here. I like their, I like their outlay on their building. I like their, uh, approach to their parking and I would suggest that they, they stick to their guns on that because they know, uh, what's worked for them in the past and I happen to agree with that approach. Um, I think it'll be a good injection of, of, uh, revitalized, uh, projects in this space and I- And I think overall, it's good for the city of Richfield. There's obviously some things we can work out, some quirks and some things of a visible nature or maybe traffic flow nature. But overall, I think that this is a win-win.
Okay, we've got about five or six minutes. So do other people want to weigh in? Commissioner Sandel and then Mr. Stark?
Yeah, I would concur with Commissioner Elliott's position. I think overall, we need to look at what's in the best interest for the whole city. And I think we have a lot of, and we've done many good things in terms of making sure we have affordable housing. But I think this would be a good development for the city. It builds up the downtown area. And whenever we get to the point of doing something at the hub, this would be one more feather in our cap that would provide people who may choose to live in a different facility. I think it's, I think we should support it.
Thank you. Executive Director Stark?
Yes, thank you. I had an offline question about the, which developments have and have not contributed to the housing payment. And I will say that on paper, our inclusionary housing policy is fairly new. I don't know if it's 18 months old, probably not quite yet. But as an informal policy, it's been in place for 20 years. And so there have been projects prior to the formal policy that were only contributors. And Melissa, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is the Lakeside condos, are they contributing to the housing fund in lieu of providing affordable housing?
They are. What we did, we ended up combining the Lakeside at Lyndale condominium project with the Henley One project. And as a total between those two developments, there's a prorated amount of affordability in that. So they are providing 10% of the units when you combine those two projects and then contributing 7.5% of the available TIF to the Housing and Redevelopment Fund.
And we have a similar situation at RF 64 in which the apartment component, which is yet to happen, is intended to be 100% market rate, while the townhomes, the for sale townhomes, had 15% affordability for households up to, I believe, 110% of the median income. So again, it's kind of a mixed bag. I mean, it's always, as staff, it's always our preference that developments provide the units. And we put every pressure on that we can to see that occur. There comes a point in time, though, you know, these developments provide an open book to Lers, our financial analysts, when they evaluate these projects. And so we have a degree of certainty that what they're telling us is accurate and the numbers are what they are. And so there does come a point in time where, as much as we would push for affordability and like affordability, with the constraints on a site, it may not be achievable. You know, we've talked about some of the constraints on this site. You know, personally, I would like to see this building be taller. I think it's a good site for a taller building. But as we've discussed, that's unpopular in the neighborhood. I'm also not sure how much deeper in the ground you could go with underground parking based on where the water table might be. And so there are some practical difficulties and certainly political difficulties in going taller. So I just wanted to give some more background.
Did other people want to weigh in? Commissioner Quam?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I like, from, you know, I think you did a good job of fitting this into that space. And there are some, you know, always some drawbacks, but I like it overall. And I think also, we've had work sessions started quite a while ago. And it seems kind of unfair to throw some big roadblocks in at this point. I think Chris and Brian have done a great presentation and I was impressed in the past. And I think we should be really clear with developers upfront if something is going to be a deal breaker. But I like how you did the parking lots. And anyway, I just wanted to offer my support. Thanks.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Yes, I would like to concur with Commissioner Quam. I'm really actually enlightened that we've got a project that's moving forward with more than the minimum on the parking requirements. I think it's been a concern on the planning commission for some time now with some projects coming through. And I just want to show my support for this as well, thinking we should move forward.
All right, are there other comments that people would like to make? I'd like to thank the developers because I know you've done a lot of work on this and you've listened to what people have had to say and we appreciate that. Executive Director Stark, is there anything else that you need from us?
No, I think that we have some direction to move forward with this developer and we'll keep you posted.
All right, thanks, everyone. The meeting then stands adjourned.